I pledge allegiance
To the United States of America and to the republic that we stand. One nation, one under God, indivisible, and eternal.
I'll take rope. Claudia.
Here.
Alan. Alan Ferguson.
Unmuted Alan.
Alan does not appear to be logged in.
Okay. John Samuel.
Here.
Tracy Ellen.
John.
Yeah.
Barbara Kuchar.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Al.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date time and place thereof sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and the Town News newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts' principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, "The smoking or any use of any tobacco products strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere on school grounds, including but not limited to parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators be subject to a fine not to exceed $100."
Thank you, Tom. I'll read them.
Now, just so you know, Alan is present.
Okay. You have that, Tom?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. I'll read the mission statement tonight. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. At this time, we'll have our superintendent, Patrick Fletcher, speak about our restart program.
Mr. President, if I could, perhaps we could have public comments on the agenda, then I could make my presentation, then you could have public comments on my presentation, and then we could return to business so that we keep things separate.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only at this point? That would be, there's only a couple of items on the agenda tonight. Okay. So I guess we'll go into the consent agenda then, or do you want to speak now, Patrick?
Well, I can speak then.
Okay, because there were no public comments on the agenda items.
Okay. So, thank you all for being here. The, this meeting, our last meeting and the meeting before that have been the most attended meetings that we've had in quite some time, so I thank you all for taking advantage of the format to be able to participate. So, the topic I think that remains on everybody's mind at this point is to open or not to open schools, and I want to provide some comments on that at this particular moment, but I will cut right to the chase at the beginning of this, and at this point, at this particular moment, on, at 8:05 on August 17th, I am not, I repeat, not prepared to make a recommendation to the board that we begin school virtually at this point, and hopefully I'm going to lay out some reasons for that right now. As soon as I said that, I want everybody to understand that this remains to be a fluid situation, and the fluidity of the situation, I hopefully people will understand why I am reluctant at this point to make that decision. So on Wednesday of last week, the governor gave a press conference where he indicated he would be exhibiting or executing an executive order providing school districts with the option of opening virtually. Second, he indicated that the Department of Health would be releasing guidelines on, or guidance for school districts to use when they're making those decisions. Third, he indicated that there would be additional guidance coming forth from the Department of Education regarding our restart plans. At this point, all that we have received is the information relative to the Department of Health guidelines. We have not, I repeat, not received forthcoming additional guidance from the Department of Education. In the executive order and in the existing and in the ensuing conversations that took place, in order to open virtually, it is my understanding that you are supposed to identify a date by which you would open in person, and secondly, you would have to sign an attestation form that indicates why you are not opening in person now. As I indicated to the restart committee on Friday, and it's still the case today, we do not have, I do not have that information, so I simply am not in a position to promise something that I don't know what I'm promising. We continue to work to try to find ways to be able to open safely. We continue to work on the restart plan that we put forward on July 27th and was approved by the board. By the way, that was submitted to the Department of Education on July 28th. I still have not received any comment on that plan either. The situation remains fluid. It remains fluid because there are districts that are, for whatever reason and for however they're choosing to do so, are making some decisions regarding opening virtually. Those districts are making the decisions. I'm not going to comment on why I'm, I already commented on why I'm not going to make that recommendation at this point. I can't comment on why those districts are, however they are. And as a result of that, what's happening is that slowly but surely, issues related to childcare are beginning to multiply. Because right now, with districts opening in a hybrid situation, we have employees that will have childcare conflicts. As more districts open in a virtual environment, we will continue to have childcare issues that may force a hand later on in the this summer. I anticipate that the board will later on this evening add another meeting so that we have an opportunity to continue to let the situation develop. Hopefully, we will get the promised information that we get from the Department of Health, Department of Education regarding what our options really are. And what I feel is the best course of action at this particular point is to recommend to the board that we modify the school calendar slightly. We currently have built into the calendar a professional development day on October 12th. We have a professional development day built in on November 3rd, which was election day. I feel confident in making the recommendation that we pull those days back and return them to being instructional days. They remain instruction particularly because also last week, towards the end of the week, the governor indicated that the election will be mostly by mail, so I do not anticipate that we will have conflicts in the schools.
Just starting later.
Someone's unmuted there. If you could just hold off on your, the comments for a second. And that what we would do is have a professional development for staff on September 1st, which it's scheduled for now. We would have professional development on September 2nd and September 3rd, and on Friday, September 4th only, we would have a virtual day where we would just simply have the opportunity for all students to meet their teachers through the virtual environment. They would go through all the periods. The periods would be shorter, but we would have the opportunity to make sure everybody makes the connection, and at this point, we would return to in-person instruction, the hybrid schedule that we identified in our October plan on Tuesday, September 8th. That doesn't change the rest of the calendar in any way, shape, or form, but it modifies the first week and hopefully provides us with an opportunity to have more information become available and more information developed. And I would recommend to the board that we withdraw Resolution Number 4. That's on the regular agenda for, I'm sorry, Roman numeral 6, item 4, withdraw that, and then also add a meeting for August 31st where hopefully we would have an opportunity to have the more information to make that decision whether we are going to remain in person or not. I will tell you that at this point, the decision remains complicated by the fact that one of our sending districts has chosen to go virtual and one of our sending districts has not. So even within our own community of River Edge and Oradell, there is disagreement amongst the districts on how to proceed, which is only going to make our situation more complicated as we go forward. In order to have opportunity for parents and for staff members, the staff I've already mentioned with professional development, but for staff, for parents to have greater understandings, we are in the process of designing opportunities for orientations for parents so that, and particularly in our focal points of incoming 7th grade and incoming 9th grade, so that there is an opportunity to see what's going to happen as far as the school is concerned, and then, and that would happen prior to the beginning of school year. We also would and are in the process of identifying some video or developing some videos that we would be able to post so that students and parents would understand what our procedures are, which have been outlined in our plans, and how they would physically work when students are to re-enter the building at a given point. Please understand that the governor's order does not, does not give districts the right to just have virtual instruction for an indefinite period of time. There has to be some, some definition associated with it, and as I indicated to you, I simply do not at this point know what those conditions are in order to make a recommendation to the board. I think that summarizes where we are at this point. I'd open, Mr. Graff asked for any comments from the board members, and then I would respect that you allow public to speak on that issue only.
Right. Thank you, Patrick. Any of the board members have anything to add to this before we go to the public? Okay. We're going to open it up to the public comments only on the restart program at this point with Mr. Fletcher just outlined, and as per policy, we're going to limit you to three minutes. And we're going to give a chance to everyone to speak, so if you do have a second attempt to get to the microphone, let's see to it that everyone else gets a first question, and if you don't mind. So, Mark, at this point, if you want to start with any public comments.
Nancy Olson. Nancy Olson.
Nancy Olson.
Nancy, go ahead.
So, my comment is, first, you have an ABAB schedule. Why shouldn't it be AABB so that we can like clear, number one, just to have it set that one class is together and then they have and then you could find out if there's a breakout before the B class. Second question is currently unavailable. Obviously, my son struggled. Please leave a message after the tone. I was constantly on the phone. She's excellent. When you have finished, please hang up or press the pound key for more options. Constantly on the phone with her for my son and his grades because he struggled last year with an IEP because he was not in school, and why is it just core? Why is my kid for gym or art or whatever? Those are my two questions.
I can help you with the first one. I'd be honest with you, you were coming in and out on the second question, and then there was some interference with the open phone call, so I really didn't understand your second question. I apologize.
I think we may have lost her. Patrick, why don't you answer the first first question?
The first question is, we we did look at a whole variety of different options regarding what the hybrid schedule would be. We also did look at, you know, there are other models. There are school districts that are doing one week with one group and one week with another group. What we felt at this point is that we do have the opportunities with our preventative screening on the way in to limit the exposure for any groups of students from one to the other. The second thing would be that we feel that it's, it's best to get the synchronous learning, if you will, for all the students, whether they're in for half, whether you have students in for the first period and the second, on one day, and then the other group, and on the second day that you are able to complete the lesson associated with that in order to move off to the next round of synchronous learning.
So my other question was, my son with an IEP, he actually goes to Bosse's in the morning.
Yeah.
So he'd only attend one day in the afternoon, but why am I sending my children for gym or art? I think they need to do the core while they're there, not the specials.
I understand, and I appreciate that, and unfortunately, the school districts did not get relief from the standards that are associated with all the content areas that have been identified by the state of New Jersey through the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, so we are required to be offering those opportunities as well.
But they could do it remote. If I want someone, I feel like you should get in the core, the core four.
I do, I understand what you're saying, but it is we are required to offer those for everybody, and there, there are balancing functions for different portions of the schedule as we go through, and clearly, we're going to have to be redeploying some folks during the course of an in-person day so that we maintain the order and then for the ability to operate the building safely.
But gym class, they wouldn't be able to change because they couldn't use the locker room, and band, they shouldn't be together because they're blowing instruments. So what I'm saying is, it should really kind of be the core four that you offer and then have the specials as the remote learning.
I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate it, but the answer remains the same. We're required to offer that under the New Jersey Learning Standards, which we're doing. I understand why you're asking and what you're saying, but we're still required to offer it, and they, we're still required to offer it.
Mark, next.
Any more comments? If you have a comment, please click the raise hand button. Okay, Nisi, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I just have a question. In reference to waiting till August 31st, why are we waiting till then to make a decision of possibly going virtual and having the childcare situation be more of a problem for teachers and parents versus possibly calling it now for a week or two, just delaying going virtual the first week or two of school, and then once you have all your documents
You've reached the maximum length for voice messages. Goodbye.
Okay. And then after at that point, then decide whether or not we can, you know, continue virtual or go in person, and this way it's not up in the air until like the wait before school starts.
I, as I indicated to before, I I don't know what I'm certifying to. The Department of Ed has not released information. I'm not going to comment on why other districts appear to be doing that. However, at this point, I don't know what the procedures are in order to certify that we're unable to open the school, and I need to understand that. I'm setting the date of October 31st and trying to move the first calendar to provide as much flexibility as we can. I recognize that this is once again going to remain to be an unusual year, and even if we were to open and have some rate of infections, it doesn't mean that you close for the whole school year. I think we need to be prepared, and I, and I'm not downplaying it. I certainly am not indicating in any way, shape, or form that the concerns are not real, but this is going to remain to be a roller coaster, and I think we need to be prepared for that as we go through here.
I understand that, but I think it'd be a little more, I guess, fair for the community, the teachers, the students, if we kind of had some plan to be based on right now versus then up in the air till August 31st. I think that's really close, close call, and I understand your hands are a little bit tied because you haven't received the information, and I, you know, from the state, I understand that part, but maybe we could do a week of virtual, like you just did the two days, and then we do virtual Friday, maybe do the following first week of school virtual, and then go and start your, the hybrid schedule the following week, whatever date that is. You know what I'm saying? I'm just, because right now, it's a little bit close, I think, to the first day of school to do this, to the whole community at this point, I'm thinking.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, Mark?
Oh, yes, Desiree Ferendi, next, please.
Hi, I posted in the chat. I had a two-part question. If we return to the building, what is being done about ventilation for the actual classrooms? Are there HEPA filters in the offices as well as classrooms? And also, Patrick, you had mentioned that we would be allowed to make use of outside spaces, which I think is wonderful, but will we be able to livestream if we're outdoors while we're giving our classes? I'm just trying to think of all the possibilities here. Thank you.
First, regarding the ventilation, we do have a plan which describes how and when filters are changed and what types of filters they are and the frequency, et cetera. There are some areas of the building that will remain closed because of either ventilation or, as an example, locker rooms that we will keep closed. We have examined, and we are very fortunate that almost every classroom that we have in the district has its own individual ventilation system so that there is an adequate airflow and air exchange as described by CDC and other guidelines that we have. We have functioning windows in our facilities to be able to do that. So I'm confident that we would be able to re-enter the facility safely. I'm also confident that our procedures for screening on the way in is going to lessen, mitigate the opportunity for people to come into the building. Is it going to prevent it? The answer is no. Do I anticipate that at some point or another? There will be some positive cases, yes. We already operated athletics during the summertime and had some positive cases, so do I think it's going to happen? Yes. We need to be prepared to understand that. We need to understand that. As far as using the outdoor facilities, the answer is, we do have Wi-Fi coverage on, across the facility, so that's going to be a place that we have to work daily on the course of, you know, as, as we're in the building and working through the building. Right now, we have 20% of the, of the families that have indicated, pardon me, that they're going to keep their children home. We are operating at 50% capacity as it is, so I believe that the number of students that are going to be in the classrooms is going to be smaller than what we anticipate because, you know, obviously, we're at 50%, plus we're taking 20% out of that group. So will there be opportunities to move around inside the facility? Of course there will be. And will there be opportunities to move outside? Of course there will be, but I can't guarantee to say to you it's going to happen every Tuesday at, you know, 10:00 AM in the morning.
Hey, Mark, next.
All righty, Debbie Bargiachi. Debbie, are you there?
Unmute yourself, Debbie, please. Okay, maybe we should come back to Debbie.
All right. Next would be Keir Helstetter. Keir, can you unmute yourself?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For those of you who don't know, I just thought announcing myself is important. I am, of course, an AP Calculus teacher in the building, but I am also the RDEA president. So I come at this from two different angles. I guess, Patrick, the first thing I do want to do, though, and I think is important, is to correct the statement you had made about the fact that this topic we're discussing is about the opening of schools. It is about having school in the building, right? My members have been working since March, when the school buildings were closed. The custodians worked through the summer. The secretaries worked through the summer. So when the RDEA talks about virtual learning, we are not talking about keeping the schools closed. We are talking about an environment that is just different from the standard environment. And with that in mind, it is, taking the health risks aside, because Des' question among 30 other I have are about the safety of the plan, which we have discussed, Patrick, and I know with others, Al, and others who have been on the restart committee. But the issue that I have as a faculty member, as well as the RDA president, is I'm staring at, what, 14 days? I mean, if you want to throw in the extra PD days, those are great. I think that's fantastic to prepare, and if the virtual environment is the one that, like, the guidelines are going to suggest we're going to end up in, I would rather my people be spending their time now thinking about how they could have improved the virtual environment from the spring. We, 100%, no survey needed, will be here to service the Riverdale and Oradell communities. That's what we do, but we're being hampered by the indecision, and I get the fact that the state has said, set guidelines that are perhaps unattainable. But I look to you for leadership, whether it be Patrick or the board, I'm not sure how, where we want to put the buck here, to say, okay, the paperwork is lousy, the system is lousy, but this is what we want to do. This is what we think is best for the education of the children, right? We will get a consistent program starting virtually because we believe we'll be there anyway. It will allow the staff, the parent community, to set their schedules, right? The social, emotional well-being of these children is important. It's going to be upsetting if we go all virtual, given the guidelines of two COVID cases in two different classes, shutting down a building. It's inevitable. So why, I just, I'm not even discussing whether my staff is at risk or the students are at risk. risk. To me, it's a bad educational decision to hide behind, excuse me, but I'm going to say it, to hide behind the parlance of their paperwork. And I think the best thing for the district to do is put in your paperwork for going virtual, let them kick it back. The teachers will be better served, the public will be better served, the educational model will be better served in what is absolutely going to be a mess. But at least maybe we can get back to work in the building by February. So I don't really have a question there, Patrick. I apologize. Or Al, rather, I saw, I'm sorry, this is your meeting. But that's just something that I think that people, you know, that, I'm not here to fight about the, the little things about the plan. Like, I, we can talk about those, and you've been great, Patrick, about talking about those things and will continue to do so. But I, I just think we're missing an opportunity here to let the towns and my guys, excuse the expression, get prepared for the school year. Like, you don't have to pass the buck because, listen, the state's treating you crappy. But it doesn't have to be passed down to us, that's all. So again, I do appreciate all the hard work. I know I've been in the room many, many times. I get it. But I'm just, this is where we are and I really think waiting is a disaster. So, yeah, I don't have a question, Al, I'm sorry. But for the moment, I guess, you know, I'm just going to listen and hear what everyone has to say because I think it's important to listen at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kier. Everybody is entitled to their opinion and that's why we are having this question and answer at this point. Mark, Debbie apparently put a question in the chat.
Yes, she did. You want me to read that off?
If you, if you could read that to Patrick or to the, to the board, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Debbie asked, how will you ensure all juniors get what they need in this most critical year?
So, let me, let me answer the question. The way, what I think is being asked is I will, how are we going to be able to prepare students that choose to go to college to have that opportunity? We, meaning the tests and whatnot. We are going to, we do plan on administering the ACT. I, I don't quote me on the date, but I think it's August, I mean, October 3rd. I think it's October 3rd. It's a Saturday. We are also administering the SAT. I believe that is September 26th. We will be offering the PSAT for Riverdale students only. I, I apologize, I don't have that date. And we are working right now with both College Board and ACT to determine if we are able to offer the SAT and/or the ACT on a day when school is in session so that any Riverdale student who may have gotten shut out from an opportunity to take those exams elsewhere would have it here. It would only be open to Riverdale students. So there'll be at least two opportunities to take the SAT, one for the ACT and the PSAT. That should all be concluded, I, I believe it's before October 10th.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Mark, next.
Susan Garcia. You can unmute yourself, please.
So, my question is, in the in-person learning model, is the intention that the kids are going to change from class to class in a cohort? So is my kid going to show up to, to period one in-person and sit with one group of kids and then period two comes along? And then they're, they're going to go to their second period class and have a different set of kids? Or is the intention that they're going to cohort and go from period one and two in groups in order to sort of keep them somewhat isolated instead of intermingling with more and more kids throughout the day?
Yeah. And it's a great question. From the beginning, the answer to that question is no, they're not going to be isolated cohorts because our students mix for classes. It's particularly acute at the high school where you have sometimes juniors, seniors and sophomores all in the same class. There are different levels and of course, different electives that students participate in. I think unfortunately, the, the model that keeps being put forward where you have students stay in one room and teachers move from one place to another where the students never leave that room fits a K5, K6 model of education much more than it does the middle school and the high school. So the answer is yes, there will be commingling.
Is that it? Mark, next, please.
Vicky Bowman, please.
Please unmute yourself, Vicky.
Hi, good evening. Hi, Mr. Fletcher, how are you this evening?
Great, how are you?
I'm good. I actually agree with a lot of the things you're saying this evening. I know when you see my name. Anyhow, the gentleman who was speaking before from the RDE, I'm assuming for everybody we might not know, is that the Riverdale Education Association?
That is correct.
Well, I strongly disagree with his statement that we should be going virtual. I'd like to know if anybody has taken any time to speak with these high school aged children. I have. I've spoke with many 13, 14, 15, 16, and some are even turning 17. They want to come back to school. They don't want to go virtual. They feel that they are not learning virtually. They feel they're being given busy work. And they want to come back to school. So saying that are my questions. Do we have any idea of what percentage of teachers plan on returning to the classroom? Because each year is critical. Every school year new children are in school is critical. So my questions are, what percent of the teachers are returning to the classroom? And when we do open for in-person classes, since these children want to return to school, I think there should be very strict guidances that they need to follow. And if they, if the no tolerance policy, and if they don't follow it, they're sent home to virtual learning.
So, a couple of questions that you had in there. If I, if I miss any, forgive me, we'll pick them up again. I firmly believe that every one of the teachers and staff members associated with the RDE want to return for in-person instruction. We are, aside from that, all employees, and you and I have actually had this conversation before, all employees are entitled to certain rights under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Federal Family Leave Act, and the commonly called the CARES Act. I always mess up the actual name of the law. And I am currently working with the individual employees through that process. So I, I can't say to you 5%, 10%, et cetera, except I can say without a doubt that every teacher that I've worked with, regardless of whether they are concerned about the virus or not, want to return to in-person instruction for their students. And I'm, I'm very happy and pleased about that. The second part is, yeah, I actually had students on our restart committee and they were really good and honest with us as we went through the process. As you, as you know, I'm, I live in the community, so I do have an opportunity to see and speak with students and I know that they, that most of them, many of them want to return to some form of in-person instruction. However, there are at least 20% of the students across all seven, grades seven through 12 who have chosen at this point for remote instruction. So I just think it's a complicated process and it's one that's going to have to remain fluid. And I'm not pulling any punches with anybody, whether it be a staff member, a public member, a parent, a student, et cetera. I think this is going to be a topsy-turvy year for quite a long time. I really think that this decision regarding opening or, and forgive me if I'm not clear, Mr. Halstetter, when I say opening school, I mean returning to in-person instruction. It never was a comment that we were not working diligently when we were in an in-person or in a virtual environment. But I think that should have been a statewide decision or at least a regional decision so that there was some uniformity for everybody to be part of. I, I also can tell you that there are a number of communities, committees that are working right now and among, among them is one that is looking on how we can improve that virtual experience because we may, in fact, at some point or another, have to go back to it. So our staff has been volunteering their time during the summertime in order to set what you said, and I agree 100%, very clear expectations for staff members and very clear expectations for students. And it's just going to, it's keep, it's going to evolve. Excuse me.
All right. Next would be Chloe Darian.
Yes, this is the parents for Chloe Darian. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. First, I'd like to thank all the board members. I know you're in a difficult position and Mr. Fletcher, I don't envy you at all. I just want to transmit our request that you go in-person this fall because our experience last spring was disastrous. I understand it was in response to a quickly changing pandemic, but, you know, we've had some time now to prepare. And in-person instruction, we should be able to, with reduced capacity and, and masks and social distancing, we should be able to come back into the building and educate our children. Remote learning has been a disaster. It's well documented. And I just implore you to try to do whatever you can to get the kids back into the classroom. Thank you.
Okay. Mark, next, please.
Next would be Sylvia Ramina.
Hi, everybody, and thank you for your time. I did miss a portion of the meeting, the beginning portion, so I apologize in advance if this question was asked and answered. I do understand the intent is to go back to a hybrid in-person, which may change. If in fact it does and we end up in an all-virtual, will the teachers be teaching from the classrooms livestreamed or will the teachers also be instructing remotely?
Right, right now, both with the hybrid situation and the fact that we do have students who are going to be virtual, staff members would be in the building unless they fall into one of the categories that we talked briefly about before. But one of the baselines that we're looking to ensure for all students and, and staff members is that there is live instruction, whether it be in-person or virtual, so that every, every class would have a live component to it. That doesn't mean that in a lesson plan, there won't be some activities where students are working on their own. We, 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 oversimplification, we call that homework now, but there may be other projects where people will be working alone. But the, the intention is to have a live component, whether it be virtual or in-person.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, do we have anybody else out there, please?
Okay. Nobody raised their hand at the moment, but there are some questions in the chat. So let me go and grab one of them. Earlier, Debbie Bargiacci had asked a question, she asked a follow-up, and she says, is it correct to say the class of 2021 and 2022 will be the most adversely affected by what is happening now?
I, I don't know if I can agree with using the adjective adversely effective. Do I think they're the classes that are most affected right now? The answer is yes. And I don't mean this to be funny or trite in any way, shape or form, but this is the first pandemic that I've been through. I think it's the first pandemic that we've all been through. So we are the most affected people by it and by extension, the students are the most affected by it as a part of their, their generation, shall we say.
All righty. The next question is from Tony Cicatelli and he asks, how is the board willing to assume liability for even one death of a student or staff member?
Well, I think that's, that's the question that we're all ending up and dealing with and, and struggling with. But we have direction that we are to open schools for in-person instruction. We've been given a choice at this point, but it does, the choice is not to eliminate in-person instruction. So I really think that that question is more appropriate for the governor, the Department of Education and the Department of Health.
All righty. The next question is from Susan and she asks, or she, yeah, she asks, my child is doing remote learning. How will this school operate for remote learning students, especially in the high school? Thank you to all the board members and the teachers for their work.
If, if we, under any circumstance, I need to repeat this, under any circumstance, whether it be hybrid, in-person or completely virtual, there is a virtual component. And that component is now guaranteed because the governor has indicated that students and parents have an absolute right to do, to choose all virtual. So one of the things that we learned from the springtime is the fact that we have to have a common opportunity for students to participate in live instruction. And that's going to take place, whether it be in-person, a combination of in-person or, or straight virtual. And if we were to pivot to a virtual-only opportunity, it will not follow the exact schedule that we have for the hybrid learning because we would have the opportunity to have more, more periods during the day. The timeframe, the general timeframe would remain the same, but the makeup inside the timeframe would likely change.
All righty. The next question is from Jennifer Cucho Morris. Good evening. I have a question about security. Currently, individuals who are visiting the high school to drop off students' items such as lunch and sports equipment are able to enter the building freely in order to enter their main office. How will the school's schools implement security in order to prevent possible infection from visitors without appointments?
It's a great question. There is, each building.
Patrick.
Had to design a traffic flow, ingress and egress. There will be limited opportunity for visitors to enter the building. They will have to enter a specific set of doors in either building. They will be, have to be screened. They will have to follow all the same protocols that a student or a staff member comes. And we will have to have opportunities for them to be greeted at the door and to reduce the exposure, or the opportunity, I should say, for exposure for coming in. So a typical day in the high school would be that you would have 30 or 40 parents dropping off lunches for kids that forgot. They're going to have to be leaving them, you know, in between the doors so that there is, they're not coming into the building in order to do that. Same thing for students who forget their laptop or musical instruments. They'll be limited in their opportunity to come in the door. However, there will be times where people will have to come in for a meeting or something to that nature that cannot be conducted in a remote way. And in that case, again, all visitors will be required to wear And in that case, again, all visitors will be required to wear masks and follow our screening procedures, which include temperature checks on the way in the door.
Thank you for answering my question, Fletcher. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
The next question is from Marie Antonelli. Uh, thank you for all that you are doing. I understand that everything is fluid. But once there is the decision on live, hybrid, virtual, will there be an overview for parents on what will, what that will look like? Livestream versus Google meets, timing, expectations, et cetera?
Uh, short answer is yes. Uh, I, I indicated before that we're in the process of designing those, uh, orientation sessions. We're clearly going to have to have, uh, virtual back-to-school nights, because we can't invite all the parents into the facility at that time. So we're going to be applying those same kinds of opportunities, those same kinds of orientation sessions. Uh, prior to the opening of school, you'll get information, uh, based upon the child's grade level when they'll occur. And we're also in the process of creating, uh, videos that we could post to the website that people will be able to, uh, watch at their leisure.
Next question is from Claudia. Good evening. When are the deep cleaning days? If Group A goes on Monday and Thursdays, Group B goes Tuesday and Friday. If deep cleaning days are over the weekend and Wednesday, shouldn't we do Group A Monday and Friday and Group B Tuesday, Thursday? This way, Group B does not always follow after Group A. Thank you for all your hard work.
Well, I've indicated to you how we came up with the A-B schedule before. Uh, I want to indicate that, uh, we've revised our, our cleaning procedures. We've, uh, presented a very simple chart of that in the reopening plan that is, uh, up on the, uh, website. Uh, and I, I remain confident that we are going to be able to clean and disinfect. We've invested, uh, in those, uh, in a variety of pieces of equipment that allow us to, uh, to, to disinfect on a regular basis. Uh, we have a dedicated staff, uh, that, you know, wants to make sure that, 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 uh, every student is safe, every staff member is safe. Uh, and I, I think that we'll, we will, we will have, um, we, we, we have a more vigorous cleaning, uh, schedule as it is, which we enhanced when we closed in March, thinking that we would be opening, uh, sometime during the springtime. That didn't occur. And we've enhanced that even further with additional, uh, procedures and equipment, since, uh, since we closed in March.
Okay, and one more question from a known user. If you were to move forward with the in-person gym, what is a plan to reduce, reduce risk of transmission? If children are in the gym sweating, breathing heavily, and this is then carried into the halls and the next classroom?
Yeah, that's a great question. The phys ed is going to be, uh, reimagined, if you will. Uh, we're not providing access to locker rooms so that, uh, uh, students, uh, will have to come when they have phys ed on those days in comfortable clothing. They're not going to be allowed to change. So we will be looking, we will be looking at our curriculum that we already have, which will be dealing with more, uh, lifestyle, uh, opportunities so that we reduce the, uh, the risk while school is in-person in session. Remember, we still have athletic program going on, and that's still going to take place outside. But this is while we're dealing with phys ed. I also think phys ed will focus on health more, and phys ed will also focus on the opportunities for, uh, social and emotional wealth, uh, health and growth during the course of, uh, there are the school day.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it, Mark. Anybody else in the public have any questions? Okay.
Uh, one more question just popped up.
Yep.
It says, uh, John Ellen Rangudin. Good evening to Mr. Fletcher and the board. How do we ensure that families disclose any positive tests or exposure? And how will that be communicated to the families of classmates that may have been exposed?
Uh, so the protocols that we've designed right now and are in, and are functioning and in place during our athletic program is that students will have to present a, um, a form signed by their parents that indicate that they are, uh, or have, uh, you know, no known symptoms, no known exposure. That's not going to occur every day, uh, as it is occurring now in athletics. But students will also go through a temperature check, uh, each and every day when they come into the building. If we have a positive test, uh, we will be, uh, notifying the community that we had a positive test. And then we will have a more directed notification to any, uh, person that we know was in the class with a student, uh, that, uh, had the exposure. That would also be, um, it would occur if it was a staff member. We will not be in a position where identifying the individual. Uh, we will not say Pat Fletcher tested positive, but we will be saying that a student, uh, or a staff member that your child came in contact with would, uh, has a, has a positive test. And we would recommend that you, uh, seek medical, um, uh, advice from your family physician. If, if we have a positive test, we're required to quarantine those individuals for fourteen days, which means that those individuals who we know were exposed in the school would then, uh, have to stay home for fourteen days. They would, of course, move to a virtual learning experience. And we would be notifying the health department, who would be assisting in community contact tracing, uh, outside of school.
All right, we have another written question, and that's from Marissa Van Toll. Good evening, Mr. Fletcher and the Board of Education. Can you tell us who is doing the temperature checks? Will be conducted during a class slash homeroom. Thank you.
Uh, we, we have, uh, purchased, uh, automatic temperature checks, so that students will come up and be screened at the door. They will be supervised while they're going through the screening. Staff members will have to use the same, uh, type of device as they go through. We also have secured a large number of, uh, handheld devices, but our primary screener will be, uh, the automatic kiosks, which will be located at the doors that are designated for entrance.
And we have one raised hand, and that's from Jennifer Cucho Morris.
Hi, everyone. I have a question. Um, I missed the very, very, very few first minutes of this meeting, so I apologize if you discuss this, but I'm trying to visualize the live streaming component of how it's going to work when teachers are in the classroom being streamed and the, uh, students who are working remotely are viewing that stream. Will teachers be, um, kind of standing in front of the classroom, being filmed via a set-up camera, um, on our, you know, on our current projector? Or, uh, will, will teachers be seated at the desk for, for that period, working, um, through a webcam? That was my question.
Um, actually, uh, Jen, I think that, uh, both of those things that you described are certainly distinct possibilities for it occurring. And I think that that's going to be part of the style of the individual, uh, teacher. There are, there are some teachers who, who do that now. Uh, and there are some that will be utilizing, uh, you know, a stationary camera, whether it be attached to the, the computer that they have or a standalone, uh, webcam, as I am using right now by my desk.
So if I, um, thank you for answering my question. So if I would like to, um, say, use my whiteboard and be in front of the classroom, would I have to use my own device to livestream that, like, for example, um, my phone? Would I be streaming with my own device? Or is there some kind of setup in a classroom where there would be a camera for that?
Well, you have a camera embedded into your laptop computer now that you could use. And the, uh, software that we have now would allow you either to film your whiteboard at the beginning, at the front of the desk, or to be able to share the screen that you're working on. So your computer screen would be your whiteboard. So there's a couple of different ways of solving that issue or addressing that, uh, situation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for going over that. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
All right, so we have another, uh, couple of written questions, and we also have a raised hand. So we'll get to the two written questions first. Uh, thanks for all your hard work. Will there be any special consideration given to children with IEPs in virtual learning? That's from Christine.
Uh, yes, one of the, one of the things that we have, uh, understood from the spring and our analysis of the spring, uh, opportunity is that the students who were most vulnerable were our special education students. That was why we tried, uh, I think somewhat successfully to have an in-person extended school year in July, which we were able to do for three of the four weeks. And we are working particularly with the, um, students that are in our self-contained classes to determine if we are able to provide more instruction, more in-person opportunities, whether it be during the, a longer day or more often during the week. Uh, because, once again, we understand that some of the most vulnerable populations that we have that need socialization, that need other support services, uh, in-person are our special education students, uh, particularly our self-contained and other students like, uh, English language learners. So we're exploring that, uh, the best way to do that right now.
Next question is, uh, from Elizabeth Stiles. A good evening. How long will it take to notify students and staff if there are positive results? Thank you.
Uh, if our experience with athletics is any indication, it, all of those things occurred within, uh, twenty-four hours of us, uh, being notified of a positive test.
Alrighty, and another question, uh, from Donna Myers. Uh, good evening, and thank you for your hard work. I'm concerned about germ transmission on doors. Can doors remain open to avoid the students touching them on their way in and out of the school building and classrooms?
It would be extremely difficult, except for the period of time where we identify as the ingress, when everybody's arriving. It would be very difficult to prevent any students, uh, or people from touching the exterior doors, because once students are in and we are confident that people are safe, we'll be locking those doors. But inside the facility, uh, we will, of course, you know, do the best we can as we can, uh, as we go forward with, uh, operating each and every day. And one of the enhanced cleaning features that is part of our, uh, system is paying attention to those high-traffic areas, uh, with, uh, more frequent disinfectant, more frequent cleaning during the school day as well.
Next, we have a raised hand from Sylvia Hermina. You can unmute yourself, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Uh, final question. I was hoping that you, you might be able to comment on whether or not there was ever any attempted collaboration between the River Edge School District and the Riverdale School District. I have two young, um, children in the Riverdale School District, and I'm sure you're aware that they recently announced that we're going to be starting the school year all-virtual, which was extremely disappointing for, I'd say, a vast majority of parents in, in our district. So just curious if there was ever any attempted collaboration?
We've had opportunities for attempted, where we've collaborated yet in the past. In this particular instance, uh, we, we, I didn't, was unaware of the decision by the Board of Education until it took place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Mark?
We have a couple more written questions. Let me get to them real quick. And, uh, next one here is, uh, from Kathy Melniki. Following up on Nancy Olson's question from the beginning of the meeting, would it be possible to schedule electives and phys ed during the known remote learning time, afternoons and Wednesdays, and have math, English, science, history take place in-person, assuming we go to the hybrid model? Thank you for all your efforts on behalf of the educational community.
Yeah. Um, at, at this point, I am, I am unaware of how we could schedule that, uh, because the way our, the way student schedules work is electives also balance what takes place. So in other words, you have a full complement of things offered period one, two, three, four, because it helps to balance the class size that are in there. That's why you have phys ed every one of those periods, or an elective every one of those periods, world language, et cetera. So, uh, at this particular point, that's not, uh, a feasible option. And it's not a feasible option anytime that you're in a departmentalized structure. It is more, and it's not easy, but it's more attainable when you have a self-contained, uh, program, whether it be for your special ed students or for elementary ed students. But it is very, very difficult to do that at the high school and, or, I'm sorry, in a departmentalized setting.
Okay, we have some more written questions as well. So, uh, the next one is from Zamski Family. Good evening, Mr. Fletcher. If gyms in New Jersey are closed and skating rinks are closed, why are schools offering gym education in-person?
I, uh, cannot answer that question i- in any way, shape, or form that's intelligent, because that's the direction that we've received from, um, the governor's office, from the Department of Education. The executive order that I've referred to a couple of times specifically excludes, as an example, uh, those opportunities inside school, but they make no mention of it in generalized society. So unfortunately, I just do not have a good answer for that.
Okay, next question is from Debbie Bargiachi. If someone has a positive test, will it only be that person that will quarantine? Or will that entire class, including the teacher, need to quarantine?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if I was unclear before. If we have a known positive test, the guidelines that come out from the Department of Health have, which came out last week, by the way, indicated that any, um, student or staff member that came in contact with the individual that had the positive test is to quarantine for fourteen days.
Alrighty, next question is from Lori Dunn. I understand there will be automatic kiosks, but how will it monitor for a student with a temperature? Who will ensure students with temps don't enter?
We will have to have, uh, supervision, uh, as students enter, uh, the facility. And the automatic kiosks will indicate, um, you know, what the, what the temperature is. And I'm oversimplifying it, but, uh, if you're not within the normal range, the, uh, device will indicate that you're not within the normal range. Once we have that, uh, we would be then taking a student aside or a staff member aside into isolation until we have the opportunity to either retest, to make sure it wasn't a false positive, if you will, or to confirm, um, that the temperature was elevated, and then those students would be sent home. Staff members would be sent home as well, and advised to, uh, consult with their family physicians.
All right, we have another question from Carla. Good evening. At what point do we find ourselves in a situation where the school moves from hybrid to virtual if we have multiple students testing positive, as well as teachers? And then what is the plan for substitutes, and how will the learning continue for those two weeks with teachers quarantining? Is there a threshold for a decision in a case like that? Is there enough staff to cover where necessary?
The Department of Health guidance that I referred to indicates that if you have two positive tests that are not in the same class, uh, that that is grounds to close the entire school for fourteen days. The other thing that the Department of Health came out with is the, the fact that New Jersey is going to be divided into six regions. And each region will have a, um, color-coded, uh, a color code associated with it on a weekly basis that will determine risk. So it's green, um, yellow, orange, and red. If you fall into a red category, you have to close schools for fourteen days. So the Department of Health has identified the areas or, or what that threshold is.